I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of Independent School District 544 to order. Darrell Tungsett, would you be our clerk for today?
Yes.
Thank you. Will you establish a form for us, please?
Lane Danielson.
Here.
Jeff Orman.
Here.
Tom Carlson's absent. Matt Lemke.
Here.
Darrell Tungsett here and Melanie Cole.
Here.
Thank you. You have the agenda in front of you. There is no modifications to that agenda. Do we have a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda passes. Moving on to acknowledgements, we'd like to say thank you to Steve Johnson for his donation of a clarinet to the middle school band department at Kennedy Secondary School. I thank you to the Agastana Lutheran Church for their donation of $100 to the Otter Angel account, which assists students without money for school meals. I thank you to Shoremaster for their donation of three aluminum plates valued at $100 to the Modern Manufacturing Learning Lab. Congratulations to King Austin Tabit and Queen Ally Rinquist, along with this year's snowball royalty. And congratulations to Dalton Mortensen and Annie Magnussen for being selected as the 2015-2016 AAA winners for Fergus Falls High School. Academics, arts, and athletics are three areas of focus. So congratulations to all of them. We will move on to public comment. We have Vicki Honeman here to talk from the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Teachers.
Good day to all of you. I am Vicki Honeman, third grade teacher, a proud third grade teacher at Cleveland Elementary School. I like to put a title on everything, so my title tonight is "Something is Not Quite" Right. We do not work eight to four. You may see us leave at four, but our work is not done. We wake up thinking about school. We mentally plan on the way to school. We plan through noon hours and we go home planning for the next day. You may see us leave at four, but our work is not done. Many of us belong to community and church committees. Or we may leave at four because we're exhausted and need a break before we attend to any more schoolwork. You may see us leave at five or six because the work we needed to finish was easier to finish at school than to take home. We do schoolwork on weekends and during school breaks. We live and breathe school for nine months. We do it for the children of this community. But something is just not right. We have supported school referendums of all kinds with committee work, public meeting talks, yellow ribbon campaigns, and money. We went beyond the call of duty when we were in statutory operating debt and we took on classrooms with 32 students and not enough money to provide all the supplies they needed. We've bought our own new and used books for our classroom libraries and we replenish them on a regular basis. We still spend money on our students year after year on classroom supplies because we don't have enough to support our students for nine months. We spend money on students' Christmas presents, Valentines, and birthdays. We spend money on classes for ourselves, for licensure, and for professional improvement. Before facilities improvements were made, we had even been known to paint our own classroom walls, paint shelving, paint old desks, and yes, even paint restrooms to improve the looks in our schools. We did it, and we do it for the children. But something is not right. We've helped our students' struggling families with monetary and emotional support whenever they've allowed us to. We've had our own family struggles at times, and it is because of these that we have understanding and empathy for the families of the children we serve. We've slipped money to kids who have a zero balance in their lunch account. We provide money for students lacking funds to attend special school events and music trips. We've been known to buy clothing and toiletries for kids and discreetly get the items to them. We do it through the children and their families. But something is not right. We go to children's and grandchildren's school activities and in turn get to watch and cheer on other people's children and grandchildren. If we're at a stage in life that is somewhere between children and grandchildren, we still go because we support our home teams, our Special Olympic kids, our music programs, and speech programs. We go to events when our students ask us to come and watch because we know how important it is to them. We are stopped at restaurants and at the grocery store by students who want to talk. We always listen and visit. We're happy to do so for the students. Something is not right. I taught one year in Pillager, Minnesota, 11 years in Elbow Lake Wendell, and have been in District 544 since 1986. In terms of negotiating, that's a lot of years of discussing and reaching agreements. But it has been distressing to me to see the avenue that 544 most often chooses to go down during negotiations. It has and definitely lacks positive discussions and decision-making. I am 64. I am not old. I like being 64, but I wish I could be 64 with a positive negotiating process behind me. I wanted a process that proves my school board believes my peers and I are teachers of excellence. The lack of negotiating action and the offer shown shows all of us in the public that you lack confidence in us, and this hurts. It hurts a lot. So here I am, 64 years old, once again begging for an increase for myself and my teaching teammates. Yes, it feels to me like begging. I am unhappy that I'm being made to feel this way, and all of this is the something that is not right. Thank you for giving me time to address you today. Please take time to think about our situation with your head and your heart.
No. Go ahead and serve me.
Just want to have a response back from the board in a public forum to the community. I've had the privilege of serving on the school board for the past 15 years and know firsthand that we have a great staff. My goal as a school board member has always been to advocate for our school district and make decisions that provide our students with as many opportunities as our district can provide. I personally believe that over the past 15 years, the district has come a long ways from where we started. Our district has continued to increase our rigor in the classroom, provide for more learning options for our students, and has been working hard to make our students into the world's best workforce. This would not happen without the dedication of our staff and administration working together. I will be honest and say I would rather highlight the great things our district does than talk about the finances of the district. But I do believe it is important that I clear up some information about the school district's finances. As a school board member, we have the obligation to balance the finances of the school district with the revenue we receive. Over 80% of our revenue comes from the state of Minnesota. I know it has been said before, but our district is in the bottom 15% of funding in the state. According to the Minnesota Department of Education, if we were at state average for our general education funding, we would have generated about $14 million more in revenue in 2014.
Four.
Four. What did I say, 14?
14.
Sorry, excuse me. Four million. Excuse me about that. Four million. This is only one factor why we have a fund balance of less than 5%, whereas the state average across Minnesota is over 21%. The second factor is expenses. As everyone knows, the largest operational expense by far in the school district is in people, and teachers make up a large part of this expense. One goal that we as a school board have is to make sure that we attract quality teachers to the school district and provide a fair compensation package. One way that we check to see if we are doing this is by looking at the Minnesota School Board Association settlement information, which tracks 282 school districts in Minnesota to see where Fergus Falls District ranks and per teacher compensation. At the end of 2015 contract, we had an average compensation package, remembering that this includes salary and benefits of over $80,000 per teacher, which puts Fergus Falls School District in the top 25% of schools in Minnesota for compensation, which leads us into our current negotiations with Fergus Falls Education Association, or FFEA. This past summer, the state of Minnesota increased school funding per student by 2% in 2015 and 2016, and 2% in 2016, 2017. On the basic funding formula, this translates to the district receiving about $646,200 over the two years in new revenue. This additional revenue is for operational costs. With our last offer of 5.22% to FFEA, we have used all of this new money except for We still have all the other bargaining units and individual contracts to settle, plus provide inflationary increases for utilities, supplies, liability insurance, and transportation. In dollars, the school board has currently offered in salary and benefits over two years, $3,020 for teachers earning a step on the salary schedule, which is about 2/3 of our teachers. $2,020 for the teachers at the top of the salary schedule, which is about 1/3 of our teachers. We have also included in our offer, every teacher with less than 10 years of experience an additional personal day. So now every teacher will have three personal days each year and accumulate them up to five days. So in closing, the school board is willing to meet with FFEA sooner than March 29th. If we can find a date with the mediator. I know that we had a date set for February 12th, but that date was canceled by FFEA because of a conflict. I again want to assure the community that the school board is working hard to get a settlement that is fair to the staff, but also does not endanger the opportunities for current and future students.
And now we will move on to our regular reports. Tom Carlson is not here. We'll move on to Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region 1, and negotiations.
Great. Special Ed Co-op met today, and the director of the Special Ed Co-op, Shannon Erickson, gave a bit of information. There's a movement to have dyslexia quantified as a special learning disability, and this has become public. She was providing us information to correct the misnomer that it's not already a special ed qualifier. It is a qualifier, and it's something that is a little bit more difficult to analyze through the school process, but anyway, she just wants to put the information out there to assure people that dyslexia is something that's covered by special ed. So I didn't say that very well, but that was her part of her report. From there, we approved the reduction of one school psychology position. I'm going to revamp that as personnel are leaving. And then went through the GAZB report, which is something that we've talked about at this table as a phenomenal waste of money required by the government for retirement obligations that we don't have. So that was special ed today. Last week, I had the Region 1 Cooperative Board meeting, and we had reelection of officers, and I was re-elected chair again. And we approved a new position for the Technology Department to replace a retired person. Again, I've mentioned this before, but still working to add another position to work with the Affordable Care Act and work with the school districts to appropriately manage those requirements. We looked at some training conference planning and reviewed and adjusted our budget. And then as far as an update on negotiations, I guess we kind of had that covered already. Matt Lemke covered it. We do tentatively have a date on March 29th. So that concludes my reports. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Melanie. Lane Danielson, policy and curriculum review.
Policy, we have not met as a policy group, but we do have a couple of policies that we're going to be discussing at the work session tonight, just regarding some minor changes in those policies. And we'll make those changes. We'll have recommendations for approval at the next board meeting on those. And then regarding curriculum, the Curriculum Committee met on January 18th, and we had a couple of different folks with us that night. Greg Wagner was from West Central Initiative, Nathan Johnson from, or excuse me, Pioneer Care, and then we had a group of ladies with us too from LB Homes. And we kind of just went over some college and career readiness, focused on some things that might be helpful or coming up for some students. And one of the things that I thought, Greg had a nice chart from the economic development side, and that's made up of a group of nine different counties from this area. But the four industries with the most needed jobs right now are trade, transportation, utilities, professional and business services, education and health services, and leisure and hospitality. And also, there was a lot of discussion that night with Nathan Johnson. I think he's met already with Dean Monkey, Kerry Thompson, Jerry's been involved also about possibly setting up some kind of curriculum with the students that would be interested in becoming a CNA. And so we spent a lot of time talking about that. And the nursing homes, there has been a change in how they're reimbursed, and they've gotten a little more funds from the state so they're able to raise their wages there. And you know, I think it's something that could be beneficial, and if we can work something out through the school and the curriculum, might be good for the students and for our business down here. That's about all from the curriculum side. Well, actually, and I think our next curriculum meeting, the date's been changed to the 22nd. It was scheduled originally for the 15th, but I think it's going to be for the 22nd this month, so that's what I have.
Any questions for Lane Danielson? Thank you, Lane. Jeff Orman, Staff Development and Buildings and Grounds.
Staff Development Committee has not met. As far as Buildings and Grounds, we were talking before the meeting, the biggest thing right now is the tennis courts. Even through the cold winter, construction has continued on those, and they're fenced in and be playable in the spring. Still need to get the top coat put on. There is a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting tomorrow. I'll probably have more to report on during my next report from that and that meeting as to just make some plans for some of the capital expenses coming up, building improvements and those types of things that need to be done. I would like to take a minute to address, I was hoping to address our teacher group while they were still here. A question has come to me as a member of the Buildings and Grounds Committee about a secret building project and that having some bearing on our negotiations. And I wanted to, since this rumor is out there, address it and put it to rest. There is no secret building project. This group, the school board, is tasked with making sure we have the space needed for our students. Several years ago, we had a report that said we were going to have declining enrollment. Luckily, we didn't. We have a great problem of trying to figure out where to put all of our students. And we have the task of planning for that. If the census numbers hold true, we might see a dip in our enrollment in the coming years. If the census numbers continue with the class sizes we've seen, we're going to have some space issues. And so we are doing some strategic planning, trying to figure out how we would accommodate those numbers. That's part of what we do. So when Ari Morton does a site inspection for us and gives us input on where we could make some improvements to our building, or if we had to make additional classrooms, where those classrooms could come from, this is all just part of the planning that we do in preparation for where would we put all these kids if we had this issue. There is nothing in the works. We're not going out to the taxpayers for a bond referendum, so if that rumor is floating around, I wanted to dispel that. This is just part of our strategic plan for the future, and there is no secret project that is hindering negotiations. So I will have more from the Buildings and Grounds Committee, like I said, after our meeting tomorrow on some of that strategic planning that we are doing for our buildings in the future, and I will report on that next month. That's all I have.
Any questions for Jeff Orman?
Thank you, Jeff. Matt Lemke is Minnesota High School League Finance and 544 Education Foundation. The Minnesota High School League did meet in February 4th, but they have not released the synopsis of that meeting yet, so I cannot report on that. I have nothing for finance. The 544 Education Foundation did meet January 14th, and just to give an update to the community, we are at 312 new members so far since September 1st, 2013, so they continue to increase, which is good. And the other thing that they've been working on now is, in this cold weather, is to think about golf in July. So they've been talking about the Legends Golf Tournament that will be happening, and so they've begun the work of planning for that. And the other thing that the 544 Education Foundation has been doing is working on a strategic planning process. And so they're working on that, and their hope is just next month they continue that work, just looking over their vision and mission and purpose and stuff. So that's what I have to report for them. Any questions? Darrell Tungsett, meet and confer in Legislative Liaison.
Meet and confer hasn't met since our last meeting. In fact, they haven't met at all yet this year, so there's nothing to report there. Legislature will convene on March 8th, Tuesday. They'll have a large surplus this year to deal with, and they'll probably have fun dealing with that. But I hope they also look at the future a little bit and see some clouds on the horizon that aren't so nice. Think of the mining operations that closed on the Iron Range, the oil field collapse, which also affects Minnesota. And farm income is reported down 38% this year. And so I think they need to be aware that there's a possibility that there could be a recession. They're not always going to have a billion or $2 billion surplus to work with, so they need to be careful how they spend. That's all I have to report.
Any questions for Darrell? Thank you, Darrell. Superintendent Ness.
Yes, just a couple of things. We are excited about our interviews for Gary Schuler's position. It is an Assistant Principal/Activities Director position. We had 42 applicants. We were very pleasantly surprised at the number of applicants there. We will be interviewing six, as I said. We'll do three candidates in the morning and three in the afternoon. The process is going to be is the one candidate will be within interview group, another candidate will be with a community/teacher/coach group, and then the third group will be with Sue Thorson and Gary Schuler, taking a tour of our facilities, and they'll rotate through that in the morning, and then the other three will come in in the afternoon. So we're excited. We don't know exactly the process of the finaling down. If there's one candidate that stands above the other, if you will, we would make the offer, and if they're tied or close, we would then possibly do a second interview, but we'll wait until after Wednesday. But we're looking forward to that process. The second thing is School Board Recognition Week. And typically, what we do in November, we have American Education Week, is where we have a social gathering where we recognize our Teacher of the Year, which is Dave Schneck this year, and our Support Staff of the Year, which was Brenda Hansen. And last week, we had the Counselors Week. And now next week is School Board Recognition Week, and this is from February 15th through the 19th, and I have a statement that I'd like to read here. "Thank you to the members of the Fergus Falls School Board for being strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district, along with establishing policies to ensure efficient, effective school system. Thank you for devoting your knowledge, time, and talents as advocates to our school children." And that's one of those in good times and in bad, and obviously, we're going through a difficult scenario here, and the key is just keeping the kids in mind. And I think we, like I said, I told our staff, we have good people on both sides of the aisle in the sense of our negotiations, and it's frustrating for both sides, but I truly believe that we will come together and make good decisions for our children.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Ness? Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes for the January 25th, 2016 School Board Meeting. Bills and Treasures Report. Lane Danielson.
Yes, Darrell Tungsett and myself met with Mark Maston earlier today, looked over the bills, and nothing out of the ordinary. For the pay period, we paid out about $1.5 million, but other than that, we're shooting okay, so just recommend that we pay the bills.
Thank you. Personnel, Superintendent Ness.
Yes, we have two different items here. We have certified staff with the leave of absent requests. This is sort of a routine item here. Jesse Thorsted is on a five-year leave, or is asking for a five-year leave to continue his duties as technology specialist, and Kerry Thompson is five-year leave to continue her duties as curriculum coordinator. And then we also have a staff retirement. Barb Flom is a cafeteria worker and cook, and this would be effective at the end of the school year. Recommend approval of those items.
And then the other item is known as to desire to negotiate the Minnesota School Employee Association custodial and secretary and personnel. Do we have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General consent items pass. Moving on to old business, we have the Fergus Falls Public Schools Certified Sonority List for FY 2016. Do we have a motion to approve that list?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have the 2016-2017 calendar for the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Superintendent Ness.
Yes, looking for an approval of a calendar here. Next year, Labor Day is on September 5th, which means we can start school on September 6th. To my knowledge, I have heard nothing from the legislature that they plan on allowing us to start school prior to Labor Day. So I guess the caveat to this is I would recommend after approval of this calendar, if they happen to make that decision, get a committee together and review it again. I'm not saying for sure that we would change it, but at least review to see if we want to stick with this calendar or review. But just some of the highlights of the calendar here. September 6th is the start date. MEA is October 20th, 21st. Probably the biggest change in the calendar is we're moving our parent-teacher conferences to the end of the first quarter and then at the end of the third quarter. So our fall conferences would be on November 7th and 10th, and our spring conferences would be, I believe it's on the March 27th and 30th. So that's a little bit of a change, but we think it's going to be a positive change. With Christmas Day landing on a Sunday this year, we don't get our two weeks vacation this year. We really have enjoyed that the past couple of years, but we do have, we start December on December 19th. on December 22nd, vacation, I should say, on December 22nd, and then the New Year's holiday is on a Sunday, so then Monday is then the legal holiday. So we have the Monday off. So we do have two short weeks with a week off in between, which is still a nice vacation. We graduate then on June 2nd. Our traditional graduation has been the Friday after Memorial Day, and this calendar is based off of a calendar that has worked with the Meet and Confer over the past couple of years, trying to find a solid calendar to meet the needs of the community, and I recommend approval. And if there's any questions, I'd certainly answer any.
Any questions from the board?
I approve the calendar for 2016-17 as proposed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
One more comment, people wonder, why are we doing it so early? Well, as an example, the Activities Director, they have all their schedules set for next year already. So what they do with the calendar then is they have to look for days we might not have school or things that are happening, so there'd be adjustments in that calendar. We have people already looking, when is graduation the next year? When is Christmas Vacation? Because they're planning for holidays and vacations and different things, so that's why we have to do that so early.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number two, we have a resolution on the retirement of Barbara Barb Flum. Whereas Barbara Flum began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 1996, and whereas Barb has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 20 years, and whereas Barb has done an excellent job in our cafeteria in the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls Public Schools to thank Barbara Flum for her 20 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Darryl Tungseth, yes? Matt Lemke?
Yes.
Jeff Foreman?
Yes.
Blaine Danielson?
Yes.
And it passes.
Thank you. This concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, February 22nd, at 2016, at 5:00 PM, at the City Hall Council Chambers. Following the work session, we will go into a, following the adjournment of this session, regular board meeting, we will go into a work session to talk about Policies 412, Expense Reimbursement, 503 Guidelines for Foreign Exchange Students, Facilities, Minnesota School Board Association sharing, our conference, and a grievance. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.